Billy, that's not the first time she's earned that.
I know.
You're right.
I can't even laugh at Paul because you're right.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this recording meeting of the Humber City Council. And the call to order and the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I think that the move by Mark is our second to approve the agenda.
Second.
Paul. Motion for the floor to approve the agenda. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Scott. We heard you there. Next is open communication. It's time on the agenda here. Is there anyone here to speak to anything that's on the agenda? You're welcome to address that topic when it comes up in the agenda. Otherwise, if you're here to speak about something that's not on the agenda, now is the time to talk. So, welcome. Yes, and are you here for a particular agenda item or just speaking public about anything?
No.
Not a particular topic? Okay. If that's the case, we'll close the communications part of the agenda and move to the consent agenda. One item I might add here, we've got two minutes and two record license. But I think in the minutes, we were at the last meeting, the corporate name for one of the businesses that was listed there for a license was D.A.Y.S. versus D.A.Z., which I think is the official name. So, other than that, then Marshall knows about that. But otherwise, what's your opinion about the consent agenda?
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
I would second.
I give it to Craig and Stephanie. Move second to approve the consent agenda. And we're ready to vote on that. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is a public hearing for vacation of existing 20-foot stormwater easement on parcel A of Platte survey number 2A56, City of Auburn, Iowa. And officially, open this public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to that item on our agenda? Any comments committed to the city hall? Then I would propose closing the public meeting. And move to G3. That's over there. Resolution 219-2025C vacating an existing 20-inch stormwater easement on parcel A of Platte survey number 2A56, City of Auburn, Iowa. Questions of staff? Will you bear to that? Anything to add?
Something changed.
No, this is, the landowners prior to Quikstar have negotiated with the DOT for stormwater coming from east side to west. Quikstar is asking for us to move to the south. So, at the last meeting, you approved the southern easement. And now that that's not approved, then we're sorting this one to the east.
For some reason, I thought this was the one that we just approved. So, okay, thank you for the revision.
This is the one that was previously there.
Thank you.
Any questions, Scott?
None. I would move to approve Resolution 2 dash 19 dash 2025C vacating the existing 20-foot stormwater easement on parcel A.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Move second to move forward with Resolution 219-2025C. And if there's no further questions or comments, I think we're ready to vote. I will call.
Turner?
Yes.
West? Yes.
Engle?
Yes.
Rose?
Got that?
Tom Turner.
That resolution passes. I think we now go back to F1. Ordinance 120-2025A, making chapter 115 cemetery, City of Auburn. I will municipal code. This is approved, the final reading. No further comments from the city hall, I assume?
No.
Okay, I see it now.
I will move to approve ordinance number 1 dash 20 dash 2025A, amending chapter 115 cemetery to the City of Auburn. I will municipal code.
Second. Thank you, Stephanie and Mark. Move second to move forward with ordinance 120-25A. And this is the third reading, final reading. I think we're ready to roll. Call Marshall.
Anderson?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose? West? Yes. Engle?
Yes.
That resolution passes as well. Moving to item G, resolutions for approval. 219-25-25A, approving per diem travel policy for the City of Auburn.
Again, this is an opportunity for us. As I said in a previous meetings, we severely limited the amount of credit cards that we have issued to staff. For travel, this will allow them just to get a per diem amount before they go. And not necessarily have to worry about receipts. Of course, if they use the credit card, they still have to bring their receipts in. But the per diem just kind of takes the place of that process and then what they spend at that point. They can spend a little bit more at lunch, if they don't eat breakfast, however they want to do that, so.
This was an item, just like the gas tank thing that we had resolved, bills, credit cards there. It's a lot, I thought it was for audits, for $75 a day. Any questions to staff or monitor? Why got us here? Is there a motion to approve it? I'd move to approve Resolution 2 dash 19-2025A approving the per diem travel policy for the City of Auburn. Second. If you're ready to vote, I'd motion to approve on the floor on this resolution. And if there are all the questions, if you're ready to vote on it, Marshall, please.
Engle?
Yes.
Rose? Turner?
Yes.
West? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Moving to number two. Resolution 219-2025B setting established for the appointed officers, employees of the City of Auburn fiscal year 25-26.
This resolution represents a four-and-a-half percent increase to match contracted amount was starting July 1.
We saw the schedule of all the people who are affected there, but the current and the effective one tried first. There's nothing to do.
I should point out that it's four-and-a-half percent, with the exception of mine, that was approved previous resolution.
All right, I will move to approve Resolution 2 dash 19 dash 2025B setting salaries for the appointed officers, servants, and employees of the City of Auburn for fiscal year 2025-26.
Stephanie, is there a second? Move second. Move forward with 219-25B salaries. And if you're ready to vote on that, Marshall, follow the rule.
Rose?
Yes.
Engle?
Yes.
West? Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
That resolution also passes. Moving to 219-2025D accepting public improvements installation in Stonberg 10th Edition subdivision.
So, this would have been the last phase of what the original Stonberg was, but you bought an additional ten acre street, likely wanting an additional phase to what would be to the west of this. But this will finish or connect 17th all the way up to 3rd. There is a cul-de-sac that will come off of that. And I think what this has all done is close to 91 units that have been built. And I think the average house price over there is probably somewhere between $400 and $500 now.
Is this the subject of a planned zoning meeting next week? Or is there some component of the Stonberg 10th condition?
On where the cul-de-sac is, they actually shifted lots from west to east. So, they have a slightly different configuration for two lots on the south side of the new cul-de-sac. So, what P&amp;Z and the council will, at the subsequent meeting, is agree to a revised plat that moves the trail location and what those two lots will look like. It's the same, they're the same size. There's, there were two lots before, there's going to be two lots now. They're just shifting where this, where it meets up to the open green space from the west.
What's the next street to be paved up there?
So, if the next street would be the next 10 acres over, so 3rd could potentially get extended to the west. And then there's what I'm assuming will be 18th. That will come north-south and then connect back up.
All the way to 3rd Palisades?
No, this is all the way to Palisades. It stops at...
There's some property there.
Yeah.
Eighth Street High?
Eight. Connect back up.
Could have fished that area out.
I would move to approve a resolution number 2 dash 19 dash 2025D resolution accepting public improvements installation from Stonberg 10th Edition subdivision.
Well, second. Thank you, Paul, Mark. Second to move forward with Resolution 219-25D. If there are no further comments or questions, if you're ready to vote on that, Marshall, this is a vocal order.
Having voted or been mayor at the time of the first one, I am proud to say yes.
One loss later.
West?
Yes.
Engle?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
That resolution passes. We go on to 219-2025E, order construction of certain public improvements. Approving preliminary plans and fixing a date for hearing thereon and taking bids therefore for improvements known as the Uptown Lighting Improvements Project.
Public hearing will be March 17. Bids will be due on March 13. Let's say the original estimate, engineer's estimate, was about a half a million dollars. Project will be, is planned for construction after the start of Chalk the Walk and before Heritage Days.
So, when we're Chalk the Walk, it'll be before Heritage Days.
That's a pretty fast turnaround.
Yeah. Yeah. Most of it will be, I would say most of it will be bored underneath the street where the pedestals are at. We'll see some substantial work.
Questions to staff? If you're ready to move forward, Marshall?
I would approve the Resolution 2 dash 19 dash 2025E setting the hearing date for the Uptown Lighting Improvements Project on Monday, March 17.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Paul and Craig, move second to move forward with 219-2025B. And if there are no comments or questions, if you're ready to vote on that, Marshall?
Anderson?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose? West? Yes. Engle?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Moving to the motions for approval, consideration claims list. Have you got a mandate one this afternoon for Marshall? Any questions or comments about that claims list?
Marshall, is this, have I been missing this the whole time looking at the claims list? Or did you add something at the very end where it had the fiscal year 25 January revenue?
So, each month I put...
I like seeing that, but I just, I missed each month.
Well, we used to just have the fund expenses.
I always, all I used to see were the expenses, and this had actually the revenues on there as well.
Has it been on there currently? It's been on, yeah. Okay, two of us would go to him, sorry, once a month. But yeah, the claims list would be, you know, it's kind of chucked off.
Yeah, and so it's nice to see the revenues turn as well.
Yes, it is. So, yeah.
Public works rocking it again, big money.
What's going on over there, Hannah?
I'll move to approve the claims list.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is there a second?
Second.
Stephanie, Mark. Move second to approve the consideration claims list. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion consideration of setting a public hearing date and meeting time for the proposed property tax levy rate for the City of Auburn. Council action as needed.
So, if you remember, this is a kind of a cause and effect from the changes that the state made last year. So, this will be a standalone public hearing. You will have a council meeting that begins at 6:00. This public hearing will be at 6:00. And then you will go into your next meeting at 6:30. If it's anything like last year, you will go into this meeting. Five minutes later, you will come out of this meeting, and then you will wait 25 minutes until the next meeting starts.
What permits is what's required.
Yes. Well, you have to give ample time for discussion. So, when the notice goes out. So, the reason that you set this date now is because the proposed levy and the public hearing are mailed, direct mailed to all the taxpayers in Auburn, so.
Again, this one April 7th at 6:00 PM, and then at 6:30, back to our regular agenda. When you set that public hearing date and meeting time?
I would be with that meeting, Mayor.
Okay. The agenda, one, okay.
I would move to approve the setting the public hearing date for the fiscal year 2025-2026. Proposed property tax levy for Monday, April 7, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
I'll second.
I'll second. Move second to set the public hearing date, April 7th, 6:00 PM. Any other questions or comments about it? Otherwise, this is a voice vote. If you're ready to vote on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think we're at J3, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we're tampering. We're tampering, yeah.
We're going to six straight.
So close.
This is, this will obviously be a really important hire for this community. And I mean, job well done. And a coach once told me that nobody's irreplaceable. But some people are harder to replace than others. Caleb Clark is hard to replace. Doug Shannon's hard to replace. So, well done.
Thank you. It's truly been an honor and a privilege. I've been debating and talking through this for a few years, knowing that the time was coming. And Ipers has kind of tied my hands a little bit with what we can do from that perspective. I've been bending Chris's ears for a couple of years on it as well, so. But also knowing full well too that there is a time for it. And with the strength in leadership and the position that the city's in at this point, I think that's the appropriate time. You know, when I took over as chief, it was the same, same time that the city administrator departed at that time too. So, avoiding that and trying to just, you know, continue, like, phase it in one at a time and stuff like that, I think is important for the city. Fully confident in the continued success for the police department. And I've told Chris over and over, I will be here until July, through July, and I will be here after July just to help out as I can. Whoever the successor is, I will walk them through to make sure we have a smooth transition and go through from there. So, I just want to thank, you know, Chris and the team, all the, all the city staff has been great. I've told them 100 times that the last eight years have been the best years of my time in Mount Vernon with the cities, all the departments working together, the collaborative effort. And I think you see what can get accomplished when that occurs citywide. It's pretty amazing where we've, where we've gone in that timeframe. So, it's been an amazing career. I'll miss it for sure. I'll miss the people, I'll miss the activities, but it'll be nice doing a lot more fishing, so.
We always look for volunteers and heritage days.
Yes. I'm gonna take a few of those off.
Take a good laugh there.
Yes.
I said it all.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor.
Mark, having, Doug, having been involved in city government for most of the last 24 years. And prior to that, as a volunteer in Parks and Rec and everything else. I can say that the city has been in excellent hands with your leadership, both as a sergeant and throughout your term as chief. As painful as this is for me personally, to see this move, I know that it's a good one for you and your family. And I am grateful that you have given the amount of notice that you are. And it will be nice to have you remain a member of our community.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Still don't like it.
I do.
We'll make him suffer for the next six months.
I know where he lives.
Just remember, Matthew, has the cops.
I know. He has a taser too right now, so.
Couple of them.
We don't have, there's no motion or anything here. It's just discussion.
I did receive Chief's resignation several weeks ago. And have recognized what's the next step coming upon us here. I'm going to use Scott Rose's input from a committee that he's on, maybe personnel committee for the board, as well as engaging staff and Lisbon chief, Lisbon mayor, Lisbon city manager and Lisbon mayor on this transaction and this discussion, and hope to have a decision very soon here. So, taking into consideration all parameters. Probably one thing that I would say that's off the table is a national search or regional search, something like that. That's probably off the table. I know sometimes we've done that. But I think, I don't think that's off the table here.
You always put it back on, that you don't come out of the pool that you lie for and you make offers that aren't accepted. So.
Technically speaking, you do need to make a motion and those accept.
And I...
Paul?
You begrudgingly move to accept Chief Shannon's resignation effective July 31st, 2025, and not a day soon.
You may not see me much in July, but I'll be around.
Is there a second for that one? I have to like a second here.
I'll second.
Paul, Mark, okay.
I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Just making my transition here easy and helping me with some personal things that you helped me with as well.
Motion for the floor to approve, and I rather accept the resignation of Chief Doug Shannon.
I'll do it.
And this is a voice vote. If you're ready to vote on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
A lot of reluctance there, but I think that was the unanimous vote that Scott said on that.
A little louder, Scott.
Opposed? That resignation is accepted and...
I have, I have one thing I just want to add. My husband had a horrible bike accident. And he still remembers the day he came to, you know, right after that accident. First face he saw was Douglas, and...
Scary moment.
You know, it's personal for me too. So, I can't, I can't thank you enough for that moment and all those moments you provided for so many other people.
That's kind of what hooks our officers into here, being here in the small community is, you know, you're part of the community. It's been a long time. A lot of departments don't have officers that are living in the community they are. So, we have all but one from that.
I think one of the biggest sort of last eight years is that we've had very few times that there's been a standout issue, which is a testament to how you run the, run the force and it's, the community feels good about where we're at.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
And J4, discussion consideration of HVAC purchases for the public workshop. Been busy out there.
They can use, they can use man some space here. I would move approval of the HVAC for the great area from the public workshop to eight-finger HVAC LLC in the amount of $9,485.
If you fall, there's a second.
Second.
Move second to move forward with the HVAC purchase for the public workshop. Let's pull that process up here. And if you're ready to vote on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is discussion consideration of purchasing the chalk for the Chalk the Walk festival. Council action as needed.
This is a request to spend up to $4,100. Again, this is kind of a pass-through. We collect or sell the chalk at the event to make up the cost. Another, just want to give a huge shout out to Danielle and Harley Press for ordering the chalk for us. We're, we're no longer to purch, we're no longer able to purchase bulk. And so, this is the second year that she's, has basically been our vendor in between purchase. So, huge shout out to her and a thank you.
Because we're not a brick and mortar facility or a business technically with an account dealing with art and supplies, we have to go through Danielle to do that. So, in order to get it pricing this way. So, it would be double, if not possibly retail pricing, if we did not go through Danielle. So, we're grateful for her to help us in this situation.
Thanks for that explanation. Thank you, Danielle. If there aren't any other questions or comments, I would move to approve the purchase of chalk for Chalk the Walk. Not to exceed $4,100.
I'll second.
Thank you, Stephanie. Move second to purchase Chalk the Walk chalk. If there are no other questions or comments, if you're ready to vote on that purchase, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I forgot to mention to a guest here that there's paper copies of the agenda there at the back. You already got it. Okay, good. Next is discussion consideration of JEO invoice, 158-9598, on the streetscape plan. Council action as needed.
The invoice is an amount of $6,200.
Any questions? I have Lori's baby here. Questions to staff?
Hope to present it at the next council meeting. Jeremy Cameron with JEO will be here as well.
I will move to approve the JEO invoice number 158-598, the Uptown Streetscape Plan in the amount of $6,308.
Is there a second?
Second.
Craig, move second to move forward with JEO invoice question. And if we're ready to vote on that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion consideration. Next is OPN invoice, 204-26002, Humber Road Chapel Center. Council action as needed.
This is an amount of $7,056. Just had a meeting with them today and had some exciting things that will be coming to the town within the next two or three weeks.
Any questions to staff? We'll hang on a couple of weeks. You have a motion, move second to this one. You don't have a motion second to this one yet, do we?
No.
Okay. I will do that and give you the price here. Again, it's like you.
It's $7,056 and 18 cents.
And I would move to approve OPN invoice number 24426002 in the amount of $7,056 and 18 cents. Thank you, Craig.
Second.
Paul. Move second to move forward with this OPN invoice. Any other questions to staff? Otherwise, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving to reports, to receive and file, Auburn Police Report. Chief Shannon is here, any other questions? Are we scheduled to K N golf, golf tournament, huh?
We are. That'll be good.
Fourth date?
June thirteenth for the K N golf outing, so, sign your teams up.
That'll be the only time we'll see him in June. So, no other questions there? Paul, uh, Chief, the indoor reports, always very professionally done, um. Does that roll up countywide, statewide, eventually?
The annual report?
Yeah.
It's accessible, a lot of people, like, just like we do, we put it on our city website and then um, a lot of times, you know, I'll review others, or those who review ours, just go to the website, that we, we're generally looking there for them. Just to see how we're comparing and um, a lot of our data goes up, gets reported to the FBI through the um, incident-based reporting system. We'll send, we do monthly reporting to the FBI, share our data with them, and that gets published in the National Crime Statistics Report through there. So, there may be, you may see some, I mean, the numbers will not be exact, because ours is based on all of our data, like, our calls for service, our observed trips, the incident reports we take, anything that we're doing um, is going to be documented and captured in ours, but not everything we do gets reported to the FBI, they don't care how many car unlocks we've done and um, some crimes aren't reported to the crime, to the FBI, they're, they're more interested in a select group of crimes.
Thanks for staying up on that. L M is here, public works report, we've got this recently, I've been getting a lot of things to accomplish, it's always here.
Remember. We did get our new fuel tanks today delivered, so, they're not functional yet, but.
It's amazing to get anything out of this cold weather.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, as you said, it seems like when the weather is at its worst, incidents happen, right? Three water main breaks, you said?
Yes. One of them had to be fixed live, so, we couldn't shut the water off.
I saw there was one in Lisbon last week.
Yeah.
True.
I will tell you that the, I forgot to add into our report that um, with the cold weather we've had the last few days, we did not have any water problem at PD. Which was, that's a huge win for us out there, so.
Softest.
I think the work has definitely helped in the insulation.
Mine was spent there.
Yes.
Anything else to public works? Moving to Parks and Rec, second. Anything to add?
Nothing to add, sir.
Huge crowd over there today, a couple of graders, uh, best field trip ever is what I heard, uh, for that.
That was a lot of.
I'm still in recovery stage. A hundred and five of them. And uh, I won't make any comments on their hygiene.
I don't know where that's going, but um, we live on, uh, anything else?
I love that, it's the OB C good time, that's out twenty percent last year.
A lot of use, a lot of use. The cold weather is not keeping them away, which is okay, that's why we built it.
Yeah, exactly.
Cause you knew they would come.
You said it. You said it.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
And moving to full library report, um, Grace's report is here. Much to add there? When we discuss items are done, reports of mayor, council administrator, mayor's report, I had to probably mention that um, on two Zoom calls recently, county council board, which is um, it's um, four presidents and mayors, Monday, and then um, then county emergency management was two senators, so, representative of her alone. I had a request from a citizen, and I was putting this out there, um, Lindsay Glenn, she's an operations manager at Stonerick, and um, we were, conversation was on, on one thing, but uh, the way I get into an area, a field that she's interested in, or she's engaged in, in her kind of production, on um, the concept of dementia-friendly community. And she has been asked about getting on an agenda, and what she's going to be doing is, she said she'd take a five minutes, and I picked um, the meeting that Paul's going, seventeenth. For her to be doing five minutes on um, what that is all about. It might be a possible agenda topic for um, safety, safety type meeting for fire departments, for police, for um, you know, public works people and so on, recognizing um, how more just citizens are getting older and are not as quick to respond and not as active and so on, so, how to deal with it, so, I mean, ambulance squad and so on, so. I've let her do her presentation and if you want further resources from her, she'd give me plenty. Wanted to see if the department heads want to take it up, um, and um, I think that might have something that would have interest in Mount Vernon. She hasn't asked for space for Chalk the Walk or uh, Heritage Days on, on Main Street yet, but uh, that might be coming, but uh, um, it's a good cause for our citizens, so, that's gonna be on the open comment time to be used now. That's all I had, um, the council reports. Committee reports. City manager's report.
Nothing additional.
I'm glad to see you were able to move forward with the uh, city development board and the administration.
Yeah, we got that administration done and now we're gonna start another one. So.
All for good reason, yes.
Thank you.
Paul referenced the property north of town here, near the lodges, um, this was another citizen um, interest in um, doing an Eagle Cam on the um, tree that's north of the police station and um, a couple of citizens are working through E and R, Raptor Center, and Bend County Conservation to see about possibly doing something there. Kind of a unique thing, I don't think it's costly, I mean, it's uh, we're another remarkable item in Mount Vernon here, so um, that, that is working its way through the waters. Anything else in the city manager's report? And anything else that needs to come before this council at this time? Otherwise, we are adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott, thanks for being on.